Good afternoon. Yeah, yeah, I'm good. I'm in here and I...
Does Ruski live right outside of you two?
No, he lives right side, yeah. Yeah, Ruski lives right there and there's the old white house that was home to us. And then I live, yeah, he lives right side. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And now he got the red Jeep. You may take more than a grand's kid. I saw him the other day. So is that, is that Whitewood Roadhouse? Is that where he lives?
That is where Ronnie grew up. And he was in his teens, and then his parents built the one that Ruski went to. And then that's where they lived until he died. And then we built on the other side, and then Patsy's on the other side of us. So we're all there together.
I might have seen wrong about your touch grass. Yes, but it was still kinda...
Yeah, they had.
I think it was him. I think he saw me away, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We heard about eight acres, I think.
Does he do it all?
He does a lot more than that's the rule.
Oh, you know, there's something relaxing about touching grass.
I love it.
Especially on a zero-temperature.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. 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 I drew one of the guys that called in the governor's day saying just like he... I said, it was just like it wasn't. It was some guy from North State somewhere, but I swear. The pitch had gone before it was dead on. She's like, well, he's got a brother who's a... That's how they keep taking. Well, Drew, now you need to take a week off or something. You've got to cover somewhere. You can call out one of you. I'm telling you, it was a ringer. You take a week off. Yeah, I'm taking a week off next week. It was a ringer.
Good to hear from you.
Thank you, Candace.
How you doing?
All right, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Wilson County Board of Education to order for Thursday, July 29th, 2021. Um, I need to note that we are being livestreamed on our social media platforms and on greenlight and spectrum. Absent from the board meeting, but from the boardroom, but present on the Zoom platform is board member Velma Barnes. All other board members, Beverly Boyet, Blake Borkin, Henry Mercer, Ryan Breen, Deborah Powell, and myself, Christine Fitch, are present in the boardroom in addition to Dr. Mills, Superintendent Senior Staff, Ms. Teresa Ellen, and Drew Wilson from the Wilson Times. Members of the board, please let me know if you have the approval of the agenda to come forward to the, to the board at this time.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Powell.
I move to approve the agenda for the special meeting of the July 29th Wilson County School Board of Education.
Sure.
It has been moved by Mrs. Powell, seconded by Mr. Mercer, that we approve the agenda as presented for this special meeting today, Thursday, July 29th, 2021. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, since Mrs. Barnes is not here, I will do a roll call. Mrs. Barnes?
Aye.
Okay, Mrs. Boyet?
Aye.
Mr. Borkin?
Aye.
Mr. Mercer?
Aye.
Mr. Breen?
Aye.
Mrs. Powell?
Aye.
Myself, Dr. Fitch, aye. Let the record reflect that the motion does carry unanimously. Please join, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
According to the agenda that you've just voted to approve, we have a discussion action item, which is the Strong Schools North Carolina Public Health Toolkit for grades K-12. So I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Mills, and I think Ms. Ellen will be joining us at the table for information or for questions. And so, Dr. Mills, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Madam Chair, board members and others, we have a presentation with some information in it from the Strong Schools Public Health Toolkit, and we also have some updated information from the governor's call today. We tried to update the pieces that we could, and I'll ask Dr. Williams if he'll walk us through, and I'll guide us along on the screen.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for this particular presentation, this is an overview of what we'll be covering. We will be going over the current Health Department data, vaccination clinic information, which we have in tomorrow. It's our first shot vaccination for tomorrow. Another clinic we'll have it. Diagnostic testing information for the Wash, as well as a summary of the July 21st, 2021 updates. This is when the original change was made to the toolkit, with a couple of minor changes today that are noted in the presentation as well. We'll also be going over the sections of the toolkit, specifically face coverings, handling possible suspected presumptive and confirmed cases of COVID-19, cleaning protocols, procedures, transportation, and athletics, and how all of this relates to athletics. The first piece that we'd like to cover tonight will be the current Health Department data. We do have our Wilson County Health Director, Ms. Teresa Ellen, is here, and I will let her speak to those pieces of that data.
Madam Chair, board members, thank you for having me this evening. Currently, our percent of total tests that are positive is 4.8%, and our last seven-day average of positive cases has been about six cases per day. We have been fortunate that our increase in cases has not been as, as significant as some of our neighboring counties. Many of our counties around us are over 10% in their total tests that are positive. Currently, in Wilson County, 48% of the population has received at one dose of the vaccine, and 38% of the population is fully vaccinated. And an additional statistic that I have with me this evening is 4% of our 12- to 17-year-olds, or 1,243, have received at least one dose of the vaccine, and they make up about 8% of our population. And I have other statistics, but they are basically, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those, and hopefully I have to have those answers for you.
So 4% of our student population or the county's student population?
The county's 12- to 17-year-old population have been, have received at least one dose of the vaccine.
And could we get that number, or how many?
1,243.
And that becomes 8% of the overall county population?
The 12- to 17-year-olds make up 8% of our total population.
Okay, and 4% of those have been vaccinated?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that age group has made up about 20% of our vaccines that we've been given on any given day. We have tomorrow, and I don't want to give up your information, but tomorrow we have 67 registered for our clinic, and all but about six to seven of those are students. The one discouraging statistic that I will share with you is that we are, we have seen an increase in hospitalizations for patients in Wilson Medical Center. Fortunately, we have not suffered any deaths since June 1st.
What are the demographics on those increased hospitalizations? Age demographics, I guess?
I don't know that. I can find out for you.
How, how many of our cases are the Delta variant of this, do you know?
You know, we don't get statistics that give us the specifics, but what we do know is that it is the, the dominant strain across the state, and the statistics that I have, we think we shared today, is about 80% or more nationwide.
Of the hospitalizations are?
Of the variant, the strain.
From the variant strain.
And we do know that this particular Delta variant is a lot more contagious, whereas, just to give you an example, the secretary shared today, the Alpha variant would spread, one person would spread to two to three people, with the Delta variant, one person will spread typically to at least six people.
Can, do you have an idea why we're fortunate in having a lower percentage in the counties around us? Are, are we doing something, or are they not doing something, or are we just lucky? What, do you have any idea?
I don't have any scientific data.
Well, I...
Anecdotally, I, you know, early on, we, we saw fight the surge, and we were one of the highest counties impacted earlier on in the pandemic, and I, you know, just wonder if maybe now we have more people who already had the virus, I'm not sure. But I have no scientific data to, to back that up, it's just my thoughts.
When I see the, when I see the North Carolina map on the news, and they're showing the reds, orange, and, and I couldn't quite discern whether we are red or orange.
Orange.
So, red is the highest incidence, and orange is the next level, step down from the red.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we can gather that people still not getting vaccinated, that's what happened in the day before.
New Delta variant is coming in, is that affecting those people more so than the ones that have actually gotten vaccinated, or is it difficult to say?
I'm sorry, I...
My question is, I guess with the new Delta variant that's coming in, the people that are getting hospitalized, are there more people that are hospitalized that are the ones that have not received their shots?
Yes, ma'am.
And have received their shots?
Yes, ma'am.
And I was hoping, because we have more doctors out there seeking people, and nurses, you know, you yourself, that's trying to get the shot out, that more people would, would actually receive it. Are you finding the reasons that people are not getting their shots, they're still fearful of what?
Yes, ma'am. We continue to see vaccine hesitancy. We did have a group, a community-based organization that came in, and they did some door-to-door canvassing in some of our most affected or least vaccinated census tracts, and what they found is that people felt like the vi, that the vaccine was created too quickly. And even though we were able to educate them that this particular technology, the mRNA technology, existed prior to this vaccine, so it's, it was not new technology, they still continue to be fearful.
Yeah, what can we do to remedy this? Is there a solution?
I feel like more folks who can share their story with their friends and family, the more that the difference it will make, because they expect a health leader such as myself to advocate for the vaccine, but I think when you share your personal story with your friends, that will make more of a difference.
Yeah, because I heard that it was real sad they were actually...
Ms. Ellen.
Yes, ma'am.
Ellen, I'm sorry, Velma Barnes, I just wanted to say that the Darnell Alumni Association had one class, I think, that put on a clinic at the Darnell Alumni Center, and they had some of the, I guess you would say, elected officials, in-state, out-of-state, to come and just greet people, and it was very successful. And I wanted to commend them, excuse me, publicly for doing a great job with that. And if there are more of those kind of things going on in certain communities, I think that we could get more vaccines delivered.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that.
Because I see this as affecting our, our children, our students. If the adults are not getting vaccinated, then now it's open up to 12- to 18-year-olds, so will they feel the same way as their parents or their grandparents, so.
Yes, ma'am.
That may be a problem. It just saddens me to hear that, that they're still not getting their shots like we should.
Of our total tests that are positive, how many of those are resulting in hospitalization, if you know?
Um, I don't know. I can tell you that as of today, we had 11 patients in Wilson Medical Center. 11 COVID patients.
Being, being tested or having been diagnosed at this point is COVID?
Having been diagnosed and are hospitalized.
So, when you give us the seven-day average of six per day, but today breaks the, that's, that's an average, but you had actual 11 hospitalized today with COVID?
That are in the hospital. They may not have all been hospitalized today.
Okay.
But that have been admitted to the hospital at some point and are still there with, and diagnosed with COVID.
Okay.
And for the sake of clarity, that seven-day average, that's seven, that's six in a week? Or is that six per day?
No, some days we may see nine, some days we may see 10, then another day we'll only have three.
Okay.
Or maybe five. So I'm just averaging the last seven days.
So that's per day?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Who hit them?
On that, that I was touching on yesterday, and the different counties had, Wilson County at 69, um, just since July 14th, 14th through the 28th, or whatever, so, and it was, like you said, a lot less than the surrounding counties, where, you know, they were in the hundreds and two hundreds and thousands. But, so, from the 14th to the, whatever the date was, you were, you're telling me that it would all average out to be seven a day?
Ms. Ellen?
Yes, sir.
Now that we've got the benefit of hindsight, do we, do we have any idea how many transmissions we had in schools this last, this last year?
Dr. Williams may know that answer better than I do.
I'd have to refer back to the tracker, but what I can share with you is this, without giving an exact number, we didn't, we had minimal exposed, excuse me, minimal transmissions in our schools. The reason that we had minimal transmissions is because when we had a positive case, we reacted immediately that day, and then we quarantined, and as we quarantined, we were able to slow to stop that from taking place. We did have some, there were some schools where we had very large contact tracing cases, and at those schools that we had very large contact tracing cases, we, we do know we had one, two at one school, and two at another, that I can tell you right now for a fact. But I'd have to go back to the tracker, which enough, overall, as a general statement, minimal.
All right, and of the average six cases that you're having a day, how many of those are school-age kids?
I don't know on a daily basis, but what I can tell you is of the cases that we've had since January of 2021, which is 4,500 cases total, 554 of those were in 5- to 18-year-olds.
Come in here again, 554.
554.
Where, what was the age?
Five to 18.
Five to 18.
So, of the 4,500 cases since January of 2021, 554.
Thank you, ma'am. So you're looking at about 12%?
Yes, sir.
Not right now. Are we going to keep going? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ellen.
Thank you, Ms. Ellen.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions if there's more as we go along.
Okay.
For our next slide, we'd like to give you information about our vaccination clinic that we're hosting at Fike High School. For this vaccination clinic, it's open to all Wilson County school staff and Wilson County school students ages 12 and over. Again, it's at Fike High School Gym from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. First dose will be tomorrow. The second dose will be August the 20th, Friday, August the 20th. We have a number that we have put here that you can schedule an appointment to have that vaccination. The district website also has the information that you would need to download for consent forms prior to your appointment, and Ms. Lynch has posted those documents up, and it's the same ones that we sent to our staff with our staff vaccination clinic that we held back in March. Updated numbers, so as of this morning, when I did the presentation, we had 53 students and six staff that were signed up for the vaccination clinic, but, you know, with the new numbers that we've had throughout the course of the day, that is now up to a total of 67 people who have signed up to be vaccinated, with the vast majority of those still being students. And just wanted to give, make a note here to, always a big thank you to the Wilson County Health Department, every time we partner with them on these types of efforts, and just a tremendous partnership, and we're very glad to, to be in collaboration with them.
May I ask a question? I know that appointments were asked for, are there still any open slots for people to, to come, or if at this point, people have not signed up, is there a possibility of a walk-up?
We may have a few extra vaccines for a walk-up. The thing you have to understand about this vaccine is we need to know in advance because we have to thaw it out and be prepared with what we feel like we're going to need, but we usually bring a few extra just in case there is someone who walks up, because honestly, we don't want to turn anybody away.
Well, I ask that because as this is being broadcast, somebody may change their mind, and they may decide they want to come, but if they don't feel that there's any extra vaccine or availability, it may keep them from coming to this particular clinic, even though I'm sure there will be other opportunities for them to come to the Health Department to be vaccinated.
Yes, ma'am, but what I would recommend is that they call the 3600500 number in the morning, and if there are available slots, they'll put them in a, in a, in an appointment slot.
Okay, so let us broadcast now that if you have not signed up for the vaccination clinic tomorrow, and you have an interest, please call 252-3600500, and if there are any available slots, they will work to see if they can put you in slots that are available for the clinic being held tomorrow at Fike High School. Okay?
Dr. Fitch?
Yes, sir.
Would you please repeat that number again? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Could this only open up for Wilson County school students? Can other students come also be vaccinated?
We've promoted this for Wilson County school staff and students, but I defer to Ms. Ellen as far as anyone else being able to come.
Okay.
Um, I, from my knowledge, it's been Wilson County school students and teachers, but as I said earlier, we hate to turn anybody away who wants a vaccine.
Yes, because I talked with someone early today, but they're not Wilson County schools, and I was just, just wondering. Okay, thank you.
And are there any other sites other than the Health Department that may be giving vaccines at this point?
Yes, ma'am, there are other, several of the pharmacies are vaccinating. Wilson Community Health Center is also offering vaccines, and I know there are also healthcare providers, physician offices in Wilson that also provide the vaccine.
Okay. Any other questions at this point in time? Dr. Williams, we're going to turn it back to you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. For our next slide, we just wanted to give out information in regards to our Wash clinics. We've all seen and been a part of the great work that our Wash clinics do, and another, you know, wonderful partnership that we have, and our Wash clinics have been handling the vast majority of testing for our COVID testing, and we wanted to go ahead and make note that in the toolkit, one of the recommendations is to have a testing program, which we have had, we've had it the entire time, and we'll continue to utilize the Wash for our diagnostic testing. I did want to make notes to be clear, there are various types of testing, screen testing, there's, there's a variety of types, but for us, we, we conduct diagnostic testing, which is conducted for those who have been contacts. These are folks who have symptoms, COVID-19 symptoms, or have been identified as a contact, which means they've been closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes for cumulative 24 hours. So that is what we utilize our Wash clinics for, is for diagnostic testing. We also put into this presentation our three Wash clinics and how you can contact them for testing. On our next slide, this is a summary of the updates in the toolkit, has a July 21st, 2021. On July 21st, this is when the toolkit was updated to go into effect July the 30th at 5:00 p.m., which is when Executive Order 220 expires. So Executive Order 220 is an executive order that requires masking in the schools. What I will do is go through these updates from the summary of, or go through the summary of the July 21st updates, because the updates from today, there's really only one, so I may note of that. In the new toolkit, again, it's effective Ju, the new toolkit is effective July the 30th at 5:00 p.m. This is when the executive order expires. The new toolkit includes strategies and recommendations for all school districts. The language in the toolkit now is "schools should" and "all schools, schools could consider." So the language has changed to "schools are required to," to "schools should." to "schools should" and "all schools could consider." It also added modified quarantine guidance. Oh, I'm sorry.
Say that again, the new language? Is this the change that was made by the governor today?
No, ma'am, this happened on the 21st, and it's still represented in the toolkit today.
And so it is still "should" and "could consider."
Yes, ma'am. It also added modified quarantine guidance for students after close contact, in which both people were masked, which I will cover in the quarantining section. It removes any references to the options for Plans A, B, and C. There are no more options for Plans A, B, or C. It also removes references to remote learning requirements, meaning that in the toolkit, it's no longer a requirement to offer remote learning if someone's quarantined because of being sick or being a contact. It's in the toolkit that it's not required.
So if I'm in quarantine, and I'm not able to come to school, there's no option for any instruction during that time?
The toolkit removes that. However, whatever a local LEA, whatever LEA decides to do to be able to offer instruction while someone is quarantined or out sick, that's entirely in the decision of the LEA. Dr. Williams, if you want to speak more to the instructional side.
We are making plans to where that will be continued.
Okay, thank you.
Also in the toolkit, and as I go through it, let me start by saying, these things were removed. So when you see, for example, discontinue activities such as field trips and assemblies, that's been taken out of the toolkit, meaning we can do those things. So these things were removed also from the toolkit. Limited nonessential visitors, discontinuing activities such as field trips, keeping students in small cohorts, directing the flow of traffic in hallways, recommend that everyone wear masks outdoors, keeping students' personal items separate, conducting daily symptom screenings, enforcing physical distance on transportation, and again, providing remote learning options for students unable to attend school due to illness or exposure. So these were items that were taken out of the toolkit on the 21st of July. The next section that we wanted to cover in the toolkit are the recommendations regarding face coverings. So this is where I made a note in regards to the update from today. In the toolkit as of today, the July 29th update is that "schools should," this is the way it reads from the toolkit, "schools should require all students and staff in schools K through 12th grade to wear face coverings consistently when indoors. Require passengers to wear face coverings on buses and school transportations." I made the note that this would also include driver's education because that's typically our other biggest piece of transportation within the district. Ensure face coverings are worn indoors by all individuals who are not fully vaccinated. And there are exemptions to face coverings that are found on pages nine through 10 of the Strong Schools Public Health Toolkit K-12. I didn't list them. I know that everyone had a copy of the toolkit, but just wanted to make note that those exemptions are listed in the toolkit.
Madam Chair, it begins on page nine. What is the difference?
Any questions about that section before we move to handling COVID-19 cases? The next section of the toolkit that we'll cover is handling COVID-19 cases. The language in the toolkit now reads that "schools should have staff perform self-monitoring of symptoms, have families conduct home-based symptom screenings for students, immediately isolate symptomatic individuals in a designated area of the school." And then it speaks to quarantine of close contacts. So this is the quarantine information that is currently in the toolkit as of today. Individuals who are fully vaccinated and non-symptomatic do not have to quarantine. People who have tested positive for COVID-19 in the last three months and have fully recovered do not have to quarantine.
What's fully recovered? Because when you hear the news stories, you hear of the long-term effects, whether it's breathing or whatever. So what do you consider fully recovered?
I would defer that question to Ms. Allen.
No longer contagious?
No active symptoms.
No longer contagious, okay.
And the last quarantine guidance is on the next slide. This is lengthy, and I'll read it, and then I'll just summarize. But I wanted to make sure that the language directed from the toolkit was on this slide. So the last guidance that was given for quarantining in the new toolkit, "Students who are not fully vaccinated after a close contact in a classroom or school setting, if masks were worn appropriately and consistently by both the person with COVID-19 and the potentially exposed person, do not have to quarantine." So what, to summarize that, inside the classroom setting, if everyone was masked inside the classroom setting and a positive case was identified inside the classroom setting, then those students would not have to quarantine. Now I'll go to the next piece because that will explain a little further some of the caveats to that. "This applies to exposures in the classrooms, other in-school settings, and school transportation, but does not apply to exposures during extracurricular or athletic activities. This exception does not apply to teachers, staff, or other adults in the indoor classroom setting." So this exception is for students. It's not for adults or for staff. And it does not apply in extracurricular activities or in athletic activities. And it applies when everyone is masked indoors. So if there is a scenario where you are not masked indoors, you would still have to contact trace. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Why is there the exemption for extracurricular activities? Because a lot of the extracurricular activities occur within the school site. And if you have an issue during, in the classroom or the school setting, why is the exemption for extracurricular and athletic activities?
As of today, the exception, the reason that it does not apply to athletics or extracurricular activities, I have not ascertained that information as to why that is or the defining of the extracurricular activity. Is it inside the school setting? Is it an activity that took place inside? I would ask, Mr. Pearson, if you have heard, any additional information regarding why the exemption does not apply?
Madam Chair, board members, I have no additional information as to why the exception to the exception you're referencing, right? So the original rule is you have to quarantine if you're exposed. So that's the general rule. The exception is if you're wearing masks as a student and someone exposes you, and it's being done consistently and in school, then you don't have to quarantine. But now what they're saying is if you're exposed and you're wearing masks and you're doing an extracurricular activity, you still may have to quarantine. And so that, I feel like, is a precaution. That's the way I would interpret it. Because in a lot of settings, your extracurricular activities, you may not be wearing masks consistently. I think that could have been the thinking, but honestly, I have no idea. I would say, you know, Ms. Allen may have a better understanding of that, but that's my take.
And I think some of these are going to be case-by-case basis, where we'll sit down and discuss, have they been masked? How far apart were they? You know, are we talking about choir room where people are singing and they don't have masks on? That might present a greater exposure than just sitting in a classroom with a mask on. So I think some of this is truly going to be a case-by-case basis.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If the exception, they don't have to be quarantined if they're in a classroom and they're wearing masks, but that doesn't apply to the teacher. Does that mean if there's a case in the classroom, the students get to stay, but the teacher has to get it?
If it's a teacher, doesn't it mean one of the first criteria of being vaccinated or having had COVID in the last 90 days? Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
And I've got a question, just because I'm trying to reconcile it in my small, small mind. So they don't have to wear masks when they're eating and drinking?
Correct.
Which includes lunch? So if there's a positive case in a classroom, and everybody's wearing masks in the classroom, that doesn't necessarily necessitate quarantine. However, because they may have had systemic contact for more than 15 minutes in the lunchroom, they have to be diagnostically tested? Is that how I interpret this? This is interpretive?
I think that's inaccurate. The language is, the individual should get tested. But I think what you bring up is an incredibly valid point, which is if you have the close exposure without mask in the lunchroom, that seems to be a consideration that the Health and Human Services Department read and said, okay, that window, that lunchtime window is an adequate risk area? Because they do create the exception for it. But they still have this, and the second language in the toolkit is, even for individuals who are fully vaccinated, they should get tested within three to five days after the exposure. And then it's silent in the mask section on this very issue. Like, they don't address it. So I do, I think they probably should, but I would defer to Ms. Allen on that point, to be honest with you.
I don't have anything further to offer there. Again, I think, you know, a lot of this is going to be, Dr. Williams and myself getting together with our public health professionals, talking about what the situation is, what's the level of exposure, how long were they together within that six feet? And we would go from there and making decisions about who needed to be tested or who needed to be quarantined.
You raise a very interesting point, six feet. When you've got these classrooms full, there is no six-foot distance that is available. Even if you drop it to a three-foot distance, the classrooms weren't built for these three-feet and six-feet social distancing capabilities. So there lies the conundrum. Because we cannot, with this happening, we cannot say walls expand. We cannot, we don't have any other place to put the students, and they are in those confined spaces. The whole question has been raised in the past of the air circulation within the buildings, and is it adequate to offset? So we're between a rock and a hard place.
Well, I think that's the very reason why the CDC has recommended the universal masking for K through 12. That's one of the reasons.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes, ma'am. Taking what Mr. Breen has questioned about cafeteria and so forth, if a student or a teacher either is identified as exposing, possibly exposing someone, shouldn't we take some, or have some avenues for that person if they were wearing a mask? So it won't have to be quarantined and so forth in that scenario? They shouldn't leave there after knowing that to a place where they're not wearing a mask but in close proximity to people? I mean, you know, which is knowingly kind of exposing or creating a need for diagnostic testing or so forth. Shouldn't, or are we going to, or do we, does that make sense?
So if we have a positive case at a school?
So you know somebody, but they were wearing a mask, they continue to be in the building, they continue to be in class. But say they're taking course, or they do eat in the cafeteria around people where they don't have to wear a mask, or they're outside where they don't have to wear a mask, knowing that we should, to keep them in school and keep them in their classes, we should have some reasonable avenue for them to take to continue being in the building if it's a way to eat or a way to participate in course or whatever?
Yes, sir. So if we have a positive case with a student, so if we have a positive student case in a classroom, the process that we utilize when we have that is I contact the Health Department, I let them know we have a positive case, we immediately begin the contact tracing part of that. Once we begin the contact tracing part, once we've identified who the close contacts are, all the students, we make those phone calls right then. So, I mean, we make those calls immediately, and parents come and get their students at that point. We do have the positive, most often times, as a matter of fact, it's almost every time, when we are notified of a positive case, that staff member or student is not there. They're not at school that day. So most often times, what happens is they felt bad last night. They didn't come in because we've got those protocols in place that if you're not feeling well, we don't come in. They get tested, the results come back in. And once the results come back in, they've been out of the building that period of time. Then we contact trace 48 hours back from the first day of symptoms, or if they were asymptomatic from the first, from their testing date. Then once we complete that contact tracing, we begin to have students come to be picked, or we have students picked up, staff members, same thing with staff members. If there's fellow staff members that are contacts, they leave. We get coverage for them. Now, I will tell you that that decreased significantly after our vaccination clinics with our staff members. And Ms. Allen can attest to that, that when we contact traced after our vaccination clinic, when we got to the part of, have you had COVID in the last 90 days? Or have you been vaccinated? I've been vaccinated. They continued on, they stayed in the building, they continued teaching. So that, we do have protocols in place for that. And even with what is in the toolkit currently, anytime we have a positive case, we're going to work that positive case with the Health Department, every time. So we're going to call them, this is what we've got. Well, how long were they exposed in the cafeteria? You know, who were they around? It'll just be, we just have to make sure that we know who students were with, who they were around, and be able to have a process for identifying that to limit the number of people that we are sending out or having to contact trace. So, for example, if it was in a classroom and everyone was masked, and we go to the cafeteria, you know, in elementary school, for example, whether you eat in the classroom or whether you eat in the cafeteria, they typically eat with their class. So they're usually with their class. So if we know where they sat, and we know who was within six feet of where they sat while they were eating, we know that those students are the contacts. We know that. If not masked, and we're in the classroom, and we're going to centers, and we're going to this spot and to this spot, we have no way of knowing. We don't know who that is. So that's been what has happened in our contact tracing up to this point. So we've had to, for example, we've had to quarantine classes because we don't have any way of identifying. Does that answer your question, Ms. Mercer?
Well, yes. But the change we're making now, if I understand it correctly, if we have a classroom, the instructor, all the students have been masked properly, and a case comes up, if they've all had their mask on, then the quarantining is not necessary or not required?
Unless there was a period of time in that day where they were unmasked, i.e. lunch.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But can't we avoid? I can understand if it's detected after lunch, but if it's detected before lunch, just because they stay in the classroom with a mask on, there should be some avenue to take so that they don't then go unmasked around other people?
100%. Yes, sir. So if there's a case that's identified, if a staff member or student happens to be at school, and we identified it, they would become symptomatic if they were at school because they wouldn't be able to come if they were tested. They'd have to wait till the test results came back. So they wouldn't be at school. But if they became symptomatic, we would take that student. We would have them in an area of the building, which we have already designated, and we already have them, where that student would isolate.
But I'm still hearing they can stay if they've been in a classroom with a mask on?
The contacts, is that, is that who you're talking about, Mr. Mercer?
Is it the contacts or the person that's symptomatic?
Person symptomatic will not stay in the classroom?
Even if they were wearing a mask?
No, sir.
Okay.
No.
So, okay.
What's the time between testing and results?
A rapid test is that day, and then it's sent off for a PCR test, which is 24, 48 hours?
Correct.
Okay, so a person may end up with two tests. Okay, so a person may end up with two tests as a result of the suspicion of direct contact?
Yes, ma'am. If they take a rapid test, that rapid test typically is sent off for a PCR. I know with our Wash clinics, that's what we do with our Wash clinics.
Right. The PCR test is going to be your most accurate. The rapid tests are more accurate if the person is symptomatic. But if we, if they're not feeling well especially, and we do a rapid test, and it comes back negative, we will follow that with a PCR test, just to make sure of its accuracy.
And Dr. Fisher, that point in regards to testing, we really do encourage our parents when they have students who are positive or are symptomatic, and our staff, if they're symptomatic, or if they have been identified as contacts, to really go to our Wash clinics, because we have direct communication and contact, and based off the protocols of your quarantine times, 10 days, seven days, and so forth, we can expedite that in a better manner with the Wash because of our partnership and relationship with the Wash. So those return to work notes or return to school notes, Dr. Kim and her staff are providing those for us in that partnership.
So the turnaround time should be a lot less?
It is much less, yes, sir.
Okay. We need, folks need to know that. I mean, I'm sure it's.
We put it on every one of our scripts and email it to them every time there's a positive case. Yes, sir. We really do promote that. All calls, website, social media, we try to promote our Wash for everything, our testing, you know, our vaccination, well, with the Health Department, our vaccinations, but we have a great relationship with them. That turnaround time is very, very quick whenever we find out.
There's no question, a lot of attention has been going to it, a lot of effort, and I appreciate all that everybody's done, because it's, everyone's been diligent.
Been great partnerships and great relationships, for sure. Yes, sir. Any other questions about the last quarantine exception?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
And I guess specifically for Ms. Ellen, around the masks, I mean, being that we're talking about this now, the whole purpose of the mask is to stop the virus from entering the air if somebody coughs, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, the cloth masks, do they give you any protection from getting the virus?
Yes.
In what way?
That they're the same as, you're talking about versus a surgical type mask?
Well, no, I mean, just as, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, this virus supposedly escaped the bio facility, you know, I'm curious to how our cloth masks are stopping it from entering our body.
It provides a barrier.
Does it not attach to the mask and just kind of like go around with us? I mean, can the mask hold the virus?
I'm not sure that I exactly know the answer to that, but what I do know is that we, the science shows that the masks do prevent transmission.
So, but basically by, if I'm just making sure that I understand, but for the most part, by entering the air, by muckling their cough, is that right?
Or preventing those droplets from that cough from entering the air, and then someone else taking a breath and breathing that in.
So if somebody was sitting in a classroom and they were masked, and they coughed, and you know, or they got COVID, just like they tested positive for COVID, and somebody was sitting across the room without a mask on, that person would end up having to quarantine? Is that right?
Not unless they were within six feet, later than the 15 minutes in a 24-hour period.
All right. That answers it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. Williams, if you want to keep going?
Yes, ma'am. Cleaning, just put a couple of notes about our cleaning. I would just take a moment before I go into the slide here to publicly thank our custodial staffs in every single school that we've got for what they have done during this time. You know, we had the news story for WRL, and I hope everybody had a chance to see that about our custodial staffs, and you know, so I, you know, everybody, I mean, every single person, you know, in the district has done a tremendous job, you know, throughout this last school year, but since we're on the slide of cleaning, I just wanted to take a moment to thank our custodial staff for what they've done. Really, under the cleaning piece, we just need to make sure that we provide adequate supplies for hygiene, which we always do, soap, hand sanitizer with at least 6% alcohol, paper towels, tissues, plenty of PPE still available, plenty of supplies still available, we'll continue supplying our schools, we get PPE orders every day and continue to fill them. Clean surfaces once per day and prioritize the high-touch surfaces. So really, just want to draw attention to this particular note. Over this past school year, our custodial staff was wiping, they were wiping down high-touch surfaces all day, that's what they were doing all day long. And now, the guidance calls for wiping down your high-touch surfaces once a day. So our normal routine cleaning covers that, we do that. We already wipe down all of our surfaces once a day, doors, door handles. Prior to that, every time the restroom was utilized, custodial staff had to go behind disinfect the restroom. So our normal routine cleaning is the guidance now, and the high-touch surfaces, we wipe those down at least, bare minimum, once a day now anyway, in our routine cleaning. And then the last note is that if someone does become sick or is tested positive for COVID-19 within 24 hours, we clean the surface utilizing our EPA disinfecting for the virus that causes COVID-19. Same thing we would do, that we do currently, we would continue to do if we have a positive case, or we have someone who's symptomatic, we would disinfect that room the way we do it right now. So we would utilize our electrostatic sprayers, our chemical that we have, the CPA approved that kills that virus.
Dr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Inclusion in that is for efforts to minimize the touching of those high-touch areas, and the point being doors. In the mornings, when a lot of traffic coming in and out, it would make more sense to prop the doors open, or classroom doors, open them, you know, class change, you know, to keep them from having to be opened and handled every time by a lot, and by a lot of people.
Yes, sir. Those measures were put in place this past school year, we did do that. You know, moving forward, there's not a recommendation to do that moving forward, and Ms. Ellen, you may want to speak to the surface piece of it, I think it was just the transmission was not as high.
Correct.
So I believe that guidance has changed in terms of the cleaning of the surfaces so frequently, because the new guidance is that getting the virus from touching surfaces is not as high a transmission as in the air. But, you know, I think just as a matter of practice, because our staffs are accustomed to that anyway with doors open and, you know, limiting those high-touch areas, you know, that's something that we've already had in place, so not difficult to continue.
So products such as, that you see on television, such as the microband that talks about effective for a 24-hour, with all of the high-touch and the number of kids, would a product like that still be as effective, and does the electrostatic spray chemical that maintenance uses, does that help that situation?
Yes, ma'am. We use a chemical in our electrostatic spray called GD Fight Back, and that is rated by the EPA, and it kills the SARS-CoV-2 virus, which is, which causes COVID-19. All of our chemicals that we have that we utilize, whether it be wipes, whether it be the sprays, the liquids that we use to spray, every one of them are rated by the EPA to kill that virus. We have nothing that does not do that. So whenever they get supplies in the classroom, for example, they order, or they put their order into their schools, and the schools send it to us, and we send them the wipes from our warehouse. So we send it from our warehouse. So what's being utilized is what we have, our products and our chemicals that we get.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Since you're talking about the cleaning. This summer, I volunteered at Frederick Douglass in the first grade classroom, and the cafeteria staff and custodians did a fantastic job cleaning.
Yes, ma'am.
And I saw, I have to say it because I saw it with my own eyes, it's not something someone told me. So I have to, oh, the schools do the same thing, I'm not really trying to, it's just that I was there, and I witnessed this for myself, they did a fantastic job. And they had certain areas that were closed off because we weren't in that area, so that area was like a brand-new area. So our staff are really working real hard, just to put a public, for what they're doing out there.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Next slide, transportation. No major changes in transportation from what we had seen previously. I'll just go over a few of these required face covers, for everyone five years older, on buses and other transportation vehicles. Enforce that if anyone becomes sick during the day, they do not use the group transportation to return home. Enforce that if a driver becomes sick during the day, that they do not return to drive until they meet the criteria to return. Keep the windows open while the vehicle is in motion, if appropriate, safe and weather permitting. Follow all the cleaning protocols as outlined in the toolkit, and provide hand sanitizers for all those boarding the bus. These are all things that we do right now, you know, and have been doing. So these are, these are not new practices for us, and you know, very easily can continue those. So, you know, really no major changes in transportation, just identifying what's in the toolkit currently.
One question, Dr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Ms. Barnes.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that mean there is no longer a need to check temperatures as they get on the bus in the morning and before we go into the buildings?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, Ms. Barnes. So under the new toolkit, everyone, the recommendation is that staff should self-monitor at home, and parents should screen for symptoms prior to students arriving to school, but it is not, it's not for the school to do those screenings anymore.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any more questions on transportation? All right, next slide, athletics. At this time, there are no requirements that have been set forth by the North Carolina High School Athletics Association after July 30th at 5:00 p.m. So whatever the decisions that LEAs make, those are applicable to athletics as well. One note that I would make, though, is that in July 27 newsletter, the association did state that if a competing school's local policies differ, that the home team's school's policy, home team's school district's policy, that they are in effect, they must be followed at the minimum requirement. So if two districts have different policies, you know, in regards to masking, you know, protocols, things of that nature, when visiting, you follow the home team's protocols at the minimum requirement.
So would the athletic department, if you are playing my team, I'm the home team, would you notify the opposing team's school unit that certain requirements, A, B, C, D, E, are in place here, and we expect you to adhere to those?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. So if the High School Athletics Association does not put out their own guidance, we, Mr. Tillman, myself, and other county ADs and assistants superintendents around the area in conferences that we play in, have already established that we would meet after everyone's board meetings to go ahead and identify what each district is doing.
Okay.
And that is all I have from my part of the presentation. May I answer any additional questions for you?
Members of the board, do you have any additional questions in regard to the presentation that Dr. Williams and Ms. Ellen have just provided us?
Not in regards to the presentation.
What'd you say, not in regards to the presentation?
Yeah, not in regards to the presentation.
Are there any questions?
Um, I'd be interested to hear, Dr. Wilson, you indicated that plans were being made regarding instruction for quarantining students, and I'd be interested to know what those plans are, what that skeleton looks like.
So we have spent some of our ESER funds this year, and so that we could ensure that there's remote learning happening. We've actually had to do that during our Summer Scholars Program as well. So we want our teachers to be ready to teach hybrid. We have shared that with the principals as of late as on Friday, and said, be ready that if need be, that our teachers have to go into a remote learning setting, maybe they might be at school when the student's at home, or vice versa. So I think that might be answering your question.
It did. And that raises another interesting point, you said that we had to go hybrid during the Summer Scholars Institute. We had quarantine cases or COVID cases that would necessitate that?
Yes, sir.
And about how many?
We had two student cases and one staff case.
Okay. And how many students was that total?
In?
In the entire Summer Scholars Institute?
Get it before you write here, my data collection.
It's a lot fancier than my spreadsheet.
More reliable.
To go to.
I knew that was on there, runs on a digital form, man, I don't know about it.
That's how I keep all my notes, too, everything's kept with us.
There's nothing wrong with that.
All right. So we had, we had one on 7:15, we had one class, so that was approximately 25 students and three staff members.
Are these numbers for going into quarantine during the Summer Scholars Institute?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that was it. And there was an additional class, so there were two classes where we contact traced, and those two classes were quarantined.
And out of how many total students in our Summer Scholars Institute program?
Was it 1,700?
1,700.
1,800.
1,800.
Was close to 1,800.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair. Mrs. Boye.
I am a little concerned about what you just said in that I would like our goal to be having our students back in class learning. Those that wanted to be in virtual academy, then they were able to sign up for that, and I'm concerned with that. I know that in the comments that I read in another newspaper from another board, the superintendent made mention that he wanted, that they were going to make him make decisions just like we are today, but he wanted parents to understand there that there would not be remote learning as they knew it last year, that the students would have the opportunity to take home makeup work and communicate with their teacher, just as we would have in the past, but as far as going home and logging in like they did in the past, that that would not. And that's what I want to make sure that you're not saying, because I would not be in favor of our teachers having to, as we begin the school year, do remote teaching and in-person teaching with an entire, with their children like that. I want them to be in school, and if they have to be at home, then it'd go back to communicating with that child, but not that child being in a remote learning setting that they were part of that classroom. That's what I have heard from teachers and parents, too, that our goal is to get them back in school and.
Yes, ma'am. And that is our goal as well, is to keep them face-to-face. That's what they need to have. It has been very evident over this past year that we need to have our students face-to-face. You're correct in the fact that we have our virtual academy, and we have that in the works, we'll get a report on that in the August board meeting about how we're going with that. So we have some students who are dedicated. The two incidences that we're talking about here, the two classrooms, we were a little perplexed to start with when we got the call saying that we were going to have two classes, 25 students. It was between the principal and the teachers were the ones who reached out to us and said, we don't want our students to lose two weeks of learning. And it was a second, you know, second grade, and they were getting ready to take that in-class post-progress monitoring, and between the teachers and the principal came to me and said, this is what we want. We want to be able to continue to instruct our students for them not to lose two weeks of learning. It's not what we wanted, we wanted them to be face-to-face. It actually, the legislation doesn't even address that we were required to do remote learning. It said that we were only required to do face-to-face, and so that's why we went in that direction.
And I commend you, and I commend the principals and the teachers. Yes, that is wonderful, and I'm glad they did that. But now we're starting a new school year, and so what I'm saying here is I don't want us to go into that year with the parents or the teachers having the feeling that if, hey, hey, I'm going to still be able to log my child in on a, from home if they're at home for some reason and get whatever they would be getting in that classroom. I want, in my opinion, they need to be at school learning and if they're at home sick, then we'll make accommodations to get their work to them to communicate, but not a day, day-in, day-out, online streaming resource.
But if, if the entire class is being quarantined and they're not really sick and if they have a two-week window, which would mean that they were having no instruction whatsoever. I mean, I understand what you're saying for however it was done prior to this whole pandemic and digital learning, remote learning. Are you saying you don't want them to have the opportunity for the remote learning, even if it's for a five to 10-day window?
I'm saying that we will look at it on a case-by-case basis. If one teacher in an entire class was at home, perhaps in that it could be set up. But I'm saying that a teacher should not start this year thinking she's got to teach her classroom at school and the remote learners at home at the same time.
Okay.
And that everyone needs to understand that from the beginning.
But if the whole class is being, being required to quarantine, that would, that would allow, just as it did in summer, learn in the summer scholars institute, is that what I'm hearing you say?
It was.
That the entire class was quarantined and so the teacher and the principal, in consultation with you and central office, opted to be able to do remote learning so that those students did not lose two weeks' time of instruction?
Correct. We, we did not have a plan for that and within 24 hours, we developed a plan to try to figure out how to get these students' instruction, that those 10 days.
Okay.
And, and I, in, in Ms. Boyet, your, your question that you're asking, we have shared that there are some opportunities to where students may need to be in remote learning. I mean, if there's a suspension or there's a homebound student, there are some opportunities to where there could be that, that hybrid situation. We have spent, again, on these ESER funds that we, we've had quite a bit of money for our teachers to be able to do dual instruction so that there would be classrooms and that would be very few and far between. But if we have a student who is in a hospital bed.
Yes.
Who cannot, and, and again, it's a balance of case-by-case basis. And, and what we have talked about in the instructional services area is that what, the flip side to that, what our students have received in the homebound services is to where a teacher is going one time a week, twice a week, delivering a packet and then that student not getting that equitable instruction to where if we can make it happen in that classroom, to where this student can log in with the appropriate internet, the appropriate device, and be a part of that classroom, it's going to take some special teachers in order for that to happen.
And they would be teachers that would agree to that and know it upfront and would have additional funding. I'm thinking about the homebound. Homebound is not new. I bet, I know that many of us, you know, have traveled from school to home after our day at school to do homebound services.
That's right.
So, yes, I've done that and.
And, and this opportunity would be really helpful for our students.
But what I'm saying is I don't want parents to think that they can log on remotely at home and I don't want teachers to think we're starting out this year just like we did last year, that we, I'm going to be teaching all day and I'm going to be teaching all night.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
So, are you, I mean, I guess, are you?
When I hear your, your comment and question, it makes me, makes me think that it's more geared towards middle school and high school and not necessarily our little, little, little kids, where you might have, have the situation where, you know, there are vaccinated folks who wouldn't be required to quarantine. But, you know, the other part of it is, you know, if Johnny just doesn't feel like getting in the car and going to school, he should not have an expectation that Johnny can log in and be counted present.
Thank you for clarifying. That is exactly where I'm heading. I don't want this to become a catch-all that someone can stay, oh, I don't feel like getting up.
No, ma'am.
No, the expectation should be that you should get up and come to school if you're signed up for that, where attendance will be taken.
That's correct, absolutely. I promise you.
If I can, if I can interject, I do know what you're saying on, on both sides, but we've had two broad meetings with principals, one as we were able to meet again and then Friday was our summer leadership meeting and I have set the expectation that next year is a school year as we know it, which means we are back in business, we are open and we're having school. The expectation is not that students are going to be sitting in front of a laptop at the times when we could be doing direct instruction, that we have seen what happens when teachers aren't a part of that. Tell my mom I'll call her back. We can see what's happened when teachers are not a part of the equation and there's, there's nothing shocking about what the data is going to look like across the state. There is a, there is a relationship piece, there is a connection piece to teaching and teachers being present. We do have tools available to, to fill in on those case-by-case bases, but we do not want to go back to, to what we have with the remote instruction with the best we could do under circumstances. And I expect class to be held, school to be held and things to be not back to normal, we're just back in business. So, yes, I, the expectation has been set with principals that we're open for business, we're having school and it can't be, you know, camped out behind this in the classroom every day trying to do everything, too. I want to see, I want to see what teachers are good at, which is they're doing their, their, their magic, which is in front of a classroom, these are tools like anything else and they're part of it, but the expectation is we're having class, we're having instruction and we're back in business.
I will.
So, yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying and I, and I would like that to be shared, too, but I also know we've had a couple of cases where we've done some things because we have the tools to do that, but that's not the ongoing pattern that's going to get us and get our students and teachers back where we need to be, which is the relationship and interaction with teachers, yeah.
Mrs. Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank you for those comments because it is a new day and I really do think that parents know and teachers know that we are going to be going back to face, to face learning with all hopes that we will not have the quarantines and the pandemic is going to slow down and none of us have the answers, we're going to have crystal balls. But I do think from the parents I've talked to, they're expecting face-to-face learning, teachers are expecting to teach face-to-face without allowing the remote. And I do trust and know that we have people in place that will follow the protocols and along with the health department will make sure that our case-by-case situations are taken care of.
Yeah. We've had several clear discussions about that with principals and central office staff about what the expectations are and it is, we're back and we're, we're having school. And it's very important, one of the big emphasis I've had is the momentum that we've lost is restarting that and our focus needs to be on the things we're good at, which is instruction in our core and the interaction in that classroom. So, I, I don't think you're going to, if you go find a principal that doesn't understand that expectation, I'll be shocked, plus also be a little bit angry, but because we've had that conversation several times and, and I've been very clear with them, too. My fears is that we all don't do that as we start back and that's going to put us in a, in another holding pattern that our students can't afford. And, and so the expectation is, yes, we're, we're all about some instruction, we're all about face-to-face and we're all about being back and learning.
That's right. Okay.
I've got another question. Mr. Mercer?
It's just a comment as, and kind of a question. If I'm standing it correctly from what I've been hearing generally, the precautions are to try to avoid incidences where students would have to be away from the classroom. Also, the efforts have been, and that Ms. Boyet was concerned about, if it is, that time is minimized, that they're away from the classroom and the number of students, of course, is minimized. And, and I think that's, you know, that's exactly what we ought to be doing and what we ought to be having school. And situations that come along in prior years, you know, children in hospital, things like that, we dealt with those kind of on an individual basis and that's what we need to take. During this time, we've accumulated a lot of devices and means and learned a lot about how to make do and we need to use that as necessary, but we need, I agree with Ms. Boyet, we need to keep them in schools and I think that's what I hear you saying. Every effort that's been done is to keep kids in the classroom face-to-face. And, and I agree, I don't think it should, the remote learning should be a prop that somebody can use just conveniently, just like Mr. Breen was saying. We need to not make that so easy for them, but yet it be available if it's necessary. So.
But the operative expression is that on a case-by-case basis, discussion will be held and this, and decisions made.
And, and in some of those cases, if it looks like they're going to be home one or two days, send them home like we used to do. If it's, looks like it's going to be five days or 10 days or something, then think, what, how can we best serve that child and then take that, take that route. And at the same time, we don't need to burden teachers with having to teach both ways any more than we have to.
Dr. Fitch?
Yes.
If I could reiterate something that Ms. Boyet said, too, is to, which I know we communicate, but sometimes communication goes to the wayside, but to make sure those teachers know that if they have to do hybrid or remote and in-face learning, that they are notified of this ahead of time so they can get prepared for it, because I know that was one concern that I remember hearing when the pandemic first started, that teachers didn't know they had to do in-face and they also had to do remote learning also. So, just to make them aware so they can prepare, because we went through a lot last year and it was tough and, you know, sometimes all teachers don't get the same communication, but just to kind of reiterate that very same thing.
Well, you're about to make a comment, Dr. Wilson. Okay. So, I guess the question before us is because it says should, it doesn't say required. So, I guess the discussion and point to come to us, because this says discussion, action, is what is the recommendation of the administration in terms of masks?
Based on our feedback from Ms. Ellen and the health department and the governor's office today, you know, we tried to update this, obviously, with information and so everything that we've seen in the guidance we've followed so far has been from health department, officials in CDC or in, or DHHS, is that we require masks for K-12 for students and staff, athletics will be required for indoor, masks will be optional for outdoors and then we talked about the processes we'd use elsewhere and then the, we can revisit the guidelines as data warranted or set a date sometime in October. I mean, we waited today to see what the government would offer and, and there was no, there were several questions from the audience about why not make a mandate, why not institute a mandate and the, the response was, schools know what to do, businesses know what to do. So, there's no guidance coming in terms of a mandate from state authorities. So, we have followed what our health department has, has worked with us on throughout and the guidance in the toolkit and that is, that's been the direction of the board as we've gone along. So, I think that's your starting point for your discussion. I mean, there, there is no guidance other than strongly recommend or could, I mean, everything, everything's backed local, but, you know, I, I think, again, we, we've talked with Ms. Ellen and we, we've worked with that and so that's the starting point.
I know that parents are, several parents are asking that we please require everybody to be masked and so the recommendation that is being given by the administration along with guidance from the health department is leaning in, has, has been along those guidelines that we require masks for K-12 as outlined by the information before us. Members of the board, what, what is your, you hear the recommendation of the administration. Do you have questions or concerns that you want to express?
I would just like to make some comments, if that's okay.
Bye.
Um, so I've been thinking about this for, since we've talked about having a meeting and, you know, I put it, put it publicly on, on the, on my social media school board page and asked for all input. I had 53 respons, no, I take that back, it was 43 responses and it was 41 masks optional and then two, we should wear masks, um, which I guess is different, that differs from the parents that you spoke with. Um, and I guess it differs greatly from, I guess Pitt County put out a parent survey not too long ago where it was 60% masks optional and 40% for masks, which is interesting, which is interesting because that's where Biden is, that's a lot of medical personnel concentrated in one spot. I know that for my family personally, when the kids go back, they will wear masks when they go to school and that is our personal preference as a family. Now, in looking at the NCDHSS Strong Schools North Carolina Public Health Toolkit, I'm glad that they chose a very short name for that, just like the toolkit that was rolled out last time, it appears as though it's, it's been written and drafted by people who don't spend a lot of time in schools. We're in this like bizarre world where if they're wearing masks consistently, then no one needs to quarantine, however, it's a 15-minute within six-foot window within a 24-hour period. So, that doesn't take into account lunch, it doesn't take into account PE if it's outdoors, it doesn't take into account recess, those are all opportunities that would kick on a quarantine event. Well, I understand that it should be our, our goal to minimize quarantine and kids being out of school. I think it's a difficult, a difficult road to hoe, you know, knowing how a typical school day goes, trying to avoid these, this quarantine, because it seems, even with the mask recommendations, relatively impractical, given how a typical school day goes. I would note that, spend some time on the interwebs today, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, LEAs that, whose boards have met have voted to be masks optional and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 have said, we're coming back with masks and then a whole bunch of people are deferring and deferred to after today, I guess, I assume to see what the Jeffersons say. And even more folks have kicked it farther down the line to August 3rd, August 16th, from what I'm, from what I've read. But I say all that to say this, we've talked about, at length about case-by-case basis. We've talked about self-screening at home. Self-screening puts a lot of impetus on a family and on the, you know, to, to do what they feel is right for their family and to make sure that their kids don't come to school sick. If we're going to, you know, put that on our parents and put that responsibility on our parents, I think it's incumbent upon us to allow them to make the choice that's best for their family. I would ask that we consider being masks optional and then if things are not going well, mandatory mask, uh, mandatory mask requirement for all students.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Barnes?
Just want to go way in, you know, we do have a lot of unvaccinated, vaccinated students as well as staff and it's kind of fun, a little humor here, we've had options as well as staff. And it's kind of fundamental, a little humor here, we have options A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And we wanted to come back face-to-face. We wanted to come back in a safe manner. And if we're trying to prevent the transmission from schools as well as in the community, to ensure that our schools can remain open and can be safe for all students, I believe that requiring masks would be an efficient way to go. And as we go along and the variant has decreased and it seems like it's rear this ugly head, then we may be more, or I would be more in favor of having an optional mask requirement. But at this point, after listening to the CDC, the Governor's comments, American Academy of Pediatrics, and as well as Mr. Brain just going on and looking around us, I would like to see us have masks required, K through 12.
Okay. Other comments?
I have two.
Mr. Mercer?
Uh, I agree with Ms. Barnes. I'm, I'm certain there are some, and probably a lot of parents would have their child, children masked if they sent, but also there's probably some, a number that wouldn't. I, I would feel bad about it if it, if it were for the long haul. I say feel bad. I'd be reluctant to say requiring mask if it were for the long haul. But the, the numbers are going up, and the prediction is it will not peak until October. If that's the case, I'm, I'm in favor of requiring masks, as been recommended. But I'm also pleased to see that we'll revisit it at least by October, so we can have the conversation again and have more information. We'll have more, uh, see how we've been doing. Also, I'd like, you know, we have to acknowledge that our numbers have been low, and I think it's because of, of the precautions we've taken and all the efforts that have been made by the teachers and families and, and all the cleaning and, and everything. So, it's almost, in my opinion, if we leave it optional, it's almost like we aren't doing a whole lot of anything. I know some people would disagree with it, and, but I think we should go with, with mask requirements. And I do, Dr. Mills, understand if there is someone that has some huge medical exception or respiratory problems or something, that that can be addressed, that the requirement's not cast in stone, so to speak. But I'm in, I would be in favor of masks being required.
Anybody else weigh in at this point?
Madam.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Powell. Um, thinking about this new Delta variant that has hit us pretty hard, I think, what was it, one, it can affect six people? I mean, that's, that's a lot compared to the other, where it's just one to two or three people. So, I think that's pretty evident that that is very, this is a very dangerous and serious situation with this new variant. And we want our students to be safe, and we should send the message to our students and our parents and our staff, that we continue wanting them to be safe and not putting them in harm's way. And I know that there's probably some that would rather have it to be optional, but I think that my recommendation would be to have students wear masks K through 12, and that would be optional, because I believe that, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm praying and hoping that eventually this will pass, this shall pass, and we will get through this. But we still need to, I think, follow precautions and safety measures for our staff and for our students. So, that's my recommendation. I, I know that there's probably a lot of people that want to, because I tell you, I'm tired of wearing this mask too, you know? Can't talk clearly through it.
Oh, really?
Yes, it's aggravating, can't breathe. I get lipstick on it, you know?
Well, I don't have that problem.
You know, it's a hassle. I'm not saying, because I tell, I'll tell you, I do not love wearing this, but, you know, but I think that to just be cautious, I think we need to just kind of continue doing that to see what's going to happen in the future, especially with this Delta variant. People are still not receiving their shots, as we talked about earlier, for various reasons, religious reasons or health reasons. And those are the people that's, it's going to affect more so. But I think, I think just to be cautious and to be safe. Sometimes it's better to be safe than be sorry down the road. I think that we should, you know, continue wearing our masks for a period of time and then revisit when the time is right.
Well, I was just going to say that, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with Ryan. Yeah, everywhere that you go in Wilson, you know, people, you got a 50-50 split, you know, some people have masks on, some people don't. I mean, we've already, you know, shown that we've got low transmission rates in school. Um, all, yeah, all the teachers and parents that I've talked to specifically in my district, you know, they want it to be optional. So, I, well, I can't say all, but the vast majority. So, I mean, yeah, I've got, I've got away with them, and, yeah, if I, if I voted against optional masks and sat here without a mask on, I would be pretty hypocritical. So...
Did you know?
Well, that's, that's where I'm at.
I don't know if you were intending for that to be heard, Ms. Barnes, but we heard you. You're not...
I apologize.
Yeah, totally. Thank you for that, Ms. Barnes.
I think, I guess I got another second or two, maybe. The reason why, why my vote was K-12 is because my son is in a modified schedule, a modified school in Marlin. Thirty adult students sitting in his classroom, children up and down the hall, and they are scared to death about the variant, um, variant. So, they are all wearing masks as they're a bunch of happy, happy, happy campers.
All right.
Ms. Boyet, do you have any...
Yes, you know I do.
Words to say?
Um, I'm leaning with Mr. Brain in many ways. I think that the masks should be optional K-5. If I had a student there, I, I agree, as a parent, I would send them with a mask. But K through 2 is a really big concern, because when, they're just so soft-spoken. And the hit that we've taken in reading instruction, when they're reading, that mask really is hard to hear. Now, when I say optional, K-5 is what I would like. I would like for the parents to have to fill out something that it is optional, and I understand that what the requirements are, that they don't have to wear it, and if they, if they are exposed, they have to quarantine. So, I would like for it to be optional K-5. 6 through 12, I can go either way, but the ones that don't have to wear the mask are the vaccinated ones. In other words, 6 through 12, I think it encourages them, if you get a vaccination, I can take off that mask. So, I would like for it to be optional K-5. 6, 12, wear a mask unless you're vaccinated, and of course, it's voluntary that you show your vaccination. And that's, now, on the bus, 100%, I have no problem. You have a choice in most cases if you're going to get on the bus or not. So, 100% on the bus. But I'd like for it to be optional K-5. 6, 12, wear the mask unless you're vaccinated.
Well...
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mercer?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration and its, the information sheet that was passed out, and we recommend mask K-12, excuse me, require mask K-12.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Mercer, seconded by Mrs. Powell, that we accept the recommendation of the administration to require masks K-12, but to also, according to the recommendation made, do a revisit of the local process in October or at such time as necessary. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'm going to ask for you to record your vote, please. I'll start with Mrs. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyet?
Aye.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Mercer?
Uh.
Mr. Brain?
Aye.
Mrs. Powell?
Aye.
And myself, Dr. Fitch, aye. Let the record reflect that the motion carries four to three with Boyet, Boykin, Brain voting in opposition to the recommendation that we return to school with requiring mask K-12. All right? I thank you for, I knew that this would be a lively discussion. I thank you for your comments that have been made. I know that there will be persons who are not in agreement with the decision that has been made, as always is the case with any action that we take. But I think that we are moving in a direction to try to provide safety to not only the students, but the families and the community as a whole. Next item on our agenda is going to deal with some personnel matters. So, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Boyet?
I move that the Wilson County Board of Education go into closed session to consider confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and 6, and 115C-319 through 321, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in North Carolina General Statute
Second.
It is been moved by Mrs. Boyet, seconded by Mr. Mercer, that the Wilson County Board of Education go into closed session to consider confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 6, and 115C-319 through 321, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A3. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Mrs. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boyet?
Aye.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Mercer?
Uh.
Mr. Brain?
Uh.
Ms. Powell?
Aye.
And myself, Dr. Fitch, aye. Let the record reflect, the motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned to closed session, and thank you, Ms. Ellen.